Used to so many people. So, welcome here tonight to our June 24th, 2024 meeting. So if I could, have everyone join me for the pledge, please, and we'll keep this going.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Danielle, roll call, please.
Yeah. Filkins?
Here.
Host?
Here.
Rice?
Here.
Bunce?
Here.
Fosher?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Bent?
Here.
Putman?
Here.
Thank you. Get started, I need approval of this evening's agenda again for June 24th, 2024.
Move the approval of the agenda.
I'll second it.
Putman?
Yes.
Fosher?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Bent?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Filkins?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, approval of our last meeting, which was April 22nd, 2024. Meeting minutes?
Move approval of the minutes.
Support.
Bowman, mayor?
Bowman?
Yes.
Bent?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Filkins?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Fosher?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes. Thank you. This evening, we have two public hearings. So again, I guess before I get into any of the public hearing process, everyone is welcome to speak this evening. Come to the center, state your name. I think there's paper there for an address or something. Just try and limit your talking so that everyone has a chance, okay? That's all. Other than that, I'm pretty darn lenient, okay? So, uh, so this evening, we are here. Our first one is a special land use application filed by William S. Gallagher, an architect for the property located at 903 North Mitchell Street to allow for a drive-through restaurant operation. Having read that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Wallace at this stage.
Thank you. The first public hearing is on a subway drive-through restaurant proposed on the north end of Mitchell Street, 903 North Mitchell. The reason why it is here for a public hearing is just the drive-through nature of the restaurant. If it were just a sit-down restaurant with no drive-through, there would be no public hearing required. So the main focus of this application is to feel comfortable that the restaurant with the drive-through element is appropriate for the area. As you can see in this picture, the driveway is proposed at the north end of the site. It is a driveway that not only would have to be approved by the city, but would also have to be approved by MDOT as well, and the applicant is aware of that. The, um, the site plan has gone through department head site plan review and has been approved, except that it needs some additional information submitted. The majority of that information has been already changed on the site plan, but I would, any approval that you might consider, I would just add the caveat that any approval would also be subject to full compliance with required conditions put forth by the department heads of the various departments. The parking requirements are met. The parking spaces are nine by 20, which does meet ordinance. I did recommend that the front spaces be wide until 10 to just make them more easy to use for the frequent users of the site. They're providing about eight to 10 stacking spaces for the drive-through, which I think will be a reasonable number for the, for the restaurant. And the proposal is also to have one additional rental space in the, next to the restaurant, which they indicate that they would be using for a retail component, but it could be something else that also met the, the B3 zoning district designation. These are the elevations. Here, there, this is the north elevation and the west, and then we also have the south elevation and then the east, which would also be the front elevation. It would give you an idea of what the, the building would look like. And you can see there's an area articulated for signage for two businesses on the site. And all the signage that would be on the site would also be required to go through the sign permit process when they come, come through for installation of the signs. And that's really all I have on the, graphically on this case. I have included a lot of information in your packet. We did receive one correspondence in opposition to the project, which came in today, actually just a short time ago, so it wasn't possible to get it to you early, but that one letter of opposition should be in front of you tonight. I believe the representative for the applicant is here this evening, if he would like to say a few words to expand upon my presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bill Gallagher. I'm owner of WSC Architect from Alplazent. Thank you for hearing me. Yeah, the, the site is the current Northland Trailer, well, the former Northland Trailer site. So just to get people familiar with where that is. And the owner is, has, has several, well, has a number of subway eateries in St. Ignis and Midland, and, you know, he, he's familiar with getting along with neighbors and being friendly. So the, the drive-through is a component that, you know, we have idling cars there. So, you know, in terms of shielding headlight, headlamps, there is a, the owner is thinking of, or is considering, if it helps get along with neighbors, to put a six-foot fence along the south side of the property, which is basically where the cars are swinging into. So totally amenable to that, if that addresses any of the concerns that have been brought up. Other than that, John did a terrific job of describing the rest of the building. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Members, anything?
Is this, is this one of the other subway restaurants in Cadillac moving, or is it a new one?
It's a new one.
Okay, thank you.
John, if I might clarify, the only, the business is permitted, so technically it is just because of the drive-through.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there a zone where drive-through restaurants are permitted by, by right?
That I don't know without checking.
Okay. I don't, I don't see one in the, in the standard, so I was just curious if you knew offhand.
No, and, and the B3 district is our most expansive commercial district. It's, allows for the most diverse cross-section of businesses. And there are, I believe, about four or five other drive-through businesses on the north end of Mitchell in the B3 district.
And usually, the zoning ordinance I'm familiar with, drive-throughs are always special use, just for the considerations.
Thank you. Okay. Did you have any problems with staff recommendations before we part with you?
Um, no.
Okay.
No.
I'm not done. I got a question. What are the hours of operation?
Um, the, the most open case, if, if the business is, if the business becomes a high demand, it would be from 6:00 AM to midnight, but standard is 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay, and would the drive-through be open all through that timeframe?
Yes.
Okay. And you've already said that the owner, or the possible owner, or whatever, the builder, would be okay with putting up a six-foot privacy fence so that lights didn't bother the, the neighbors in the area?
Yeah. Yes, if, if the commission thinks that's worthy of consideration, then yes.
Did you get a chance to read this correspondence from the person who wasn't real happy with your idea?
Yes, I did. Yes, and, and I under, I understand their concerns. I mean, the zoning ordinance is there to ensure that, basically to preserve the environment of somebody who, who wishes to be in that place. Now, the fact that it's zoned business, those sorts of things would occur under the zoning ordinance. I mean, I understand that, you know, if they want it quieter, there's residential districts, and maybe not, you know, maybe things further from Business 131. I mean, that's, that's a busy front yard.
But there was a business there before, and it's, the only reason, again, you're here is because you want a drive-through, or he wants a drive-through.
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct. Okay.
The zoning for the property across the street is also B3. There's residential homes, but it is zoned for commercial purposes.
There's three houses over there.
Yeah.
Four, actually.
Everybody good?
I'm good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, to keep everything moving, I will go ahead and open public hearing. Again, this is for the subway drive-through. That's all this is dealing with, is the special land use to have a drive-through. Anybody wishing to speak in favor or against, welcome to come forwards for me to the podium and just state a name and write down an address. No, everybody's happy? Perfect. Oh, got one. Hi.
I'm Missy Hanford. I'm the individual that lives at 904. It's right across the street. I don't have neither here nor there, but I do think that you all need to be thinking about, um, you mentioned that there's, that there's restaurants that have drive-through through the north part of the B, in the B3 district. The difference is there is no left-turn lane there. Now, I already have a traffic issue with people turning left into Chapin Street, or, no, not Chapin, not Chapin, excuse me, into, uh, oh shoot, Powers, thank you. Powers Street, right there. Traffic gets backed up. Have you done a traffic study on this? Yeah? No? Okay. I, I didn't know if that would include in what you guys do. So there's, there's, there's traffic issues there, where you've got people coming in and taking a left to go into Powers. Ever since, I know Dawn, she owns Dawn's Midtown, there's been three accidents there since she opened in October. I'm not there a lot because I, you know, I work, I'm not there at the house, but I do know that there's traffic issues taking a left. So now you've got other people coming and stopping traffic, taking a left, where others are trying to take a left into Powers. So I think if anything, y'all need to be thinking about the traffic issues, like, we, so that we don't have them down in Dairy Queen, where Dairy Queen's backed up, I don't know what they're, you know, you said you have it backed up for about 10 cars or so. We all know that Dairy Queen's traffic gets backed up into the, into the street. So I think that's something that you guys need to be thinking of, you know, with this, with this, it, when we had, they had a renter in there before that was a, an electrician, and he was renting that building. He was evicted, and then the property was sold. So, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of traffic coming in and out of that part of the, of this, of this, of this land. There was, there was activity going on, but there's, now you're looking at not only a subway, but another retail business. I own the strip mall that's north of, that's north of Waxford Community Credit Union. I have people zipping through that place like crazy, people taking a left, there's, and there's no left-turn lane. So I think that needs to be heavily considered, you know, and I don't know if you can, you know, if he needs this to be rezoned to, to have a drive-through or whatever, but I do think that that is something that needs to be concerned. So, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Missy.
Sure.
Yeah, the head, yeah, I, they don't give, they don't give a crap about my personal house. You chose to live there. Yeah, 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 I'm not happy about that, but, you know, it is what it is. Yeah. But I think the safety issue is something that really needs to be thought about, you know, with, with the traffic.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ann Guest. I'm actually representing Dawn's Midtown. I just want to reiterate everything Missy said, mainly with the traffic in front of those buildings right there with no left-hand turn lane. It's already a dangerous section of road, traffic coming in and out of there. If you add the drive-through, you're going to have that additional problem. So that's, that's all I really wanted to add.
Okay. And since you're in front of me, young lady?
Uh huh.
Your, your hours at Dawn's are what?
They are 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, they, they catered more to the breakfast crowd.
No problem.
But yeah, there's still traffic.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on subway drive-through? At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We will discuss this briefly and keep things moving for why the majority of you are probably here. Okay. Excellent. Okay. Comments? I mean, there's traffic at Ace Hardware, I was there today, I mean, there's, there's businesses, it's, it's, I'm sorry, it's...
I, I agree with her statement that the traffic is definitely a critical issue. There are no turn lanes. Till you get to 13th Street.
Correct.
That's it.
But that is, that is zoned commercial, and that's the type of, that's the type of use that that property is there for. We, you know, we experienced that, that traffic backup issue several places, several places in town.
Question for John, I think you would maybe have the answer. Is traffic-related issues, because it is an MDOT-owned roadway, are those MDOT decision-making versus a city?
Yes.
Okay.
As, as regards to the physical configuration of lanes and changes in the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you for the...
And that's why they're also having to approve the curb cut for the, for the business.
Marcus.
I just, what's that?
I think they're, yeah, you're up.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add, many years ago, there were conversations about development off of M-55 and US-131, and the potential traffic impact that would create with the highway system and essentially the local road system, being M-55 in that area. And just going off of memory, MDOT had said, look, you know, if, if you build it, we're going to need to look, if, if, if that whole Terry D Cadillac Junction project develops the way that the developers were talking about it developing, it would without a doubt require additional off-and-on ramps, traffic lights, and all sorts of, of infrastructure. When it wasn't being required on day one, they wanted to see the impact actually happening in order to then say, you're going to need to do it. So I, I'm not trying to say that this by any means is at all at the same level of density or development that Cadillac Junction could potentially be. I'm only suggesting that MDOT might at some point, whether it's at this location, or even at the Dairy Queen location, or anywhere else along the strip, say, hey, okay, there's clearly an issue here. We need to, we need to change something. And Danielle, sitting right next to me here, reminded me that currently there is a, a MDOT corridor safety study, to call it that?
Road safety.
Road safety audit underway, and that too could bear some, some new fruit in terms of how Mitchell Street should be in the future, so.
Excellent. When, when is that coming up? Soon? Danielle? Go.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, you're good.
Oh, it's not contagious. Oh.
The two, is it spoiled? Are there businesses on the same section to where there's no center?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Just, just asking.
So, maybe MDOT checking on stuff, can do that. I already gave you your time, I, I...
Oh, no, it was for the, it was for the MDOT thing. We can chat after.
Can get with Danielle after, or Marcus, yes.
Okay. Again, drive-through.
I'd make a motion to approve the special use permit and propose site plan as proposed for the subway slash tenant project, subject to compliance with final required site plan changes per the department head site plan review and approval of the access driveway by the Michigan Department of Transportation.
Oh, darn good.
Wow, I'll second that one because I can't say it.
Mr. Bent and Mr. Bowman, of course.
All right. Bent?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Filkins?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Fosher?
Yes.
Thank you, Danielle. Okay, the reason everybody's here, thinking. Special land use application for a residential planned unit development, so R-P-U-D, sketch plan approval to build nine apartments, buildings, holding up to 70 apartment units on Kentucky Avenue with a fancy 10-10500-027-01. There, read my stuff. Mr. Wallace is gonna take over for a bit before Mr. Munger, or you want Mr. Munger first?
Yeah, so a little presentation, and Rob's here, he'll, he'll probably follow my comments. He has a, a brief presentation as well.
Okay.
This particular project has a somewhat long history dating back to 1994, when this project was approved for a sketch plan, and it was ultimately approved for final site plan for phases one and two of the project, which are now constructed. The phase three was never, they never started construction. Phase one consisted of 24 condominium units, phase two, 30 condominium units, and phase three was to be 70 apartments. They used a different style than what is being proposed under this development scenario, but we're talking about a similar number of units, but with a different layout, and I can go through that briefly. This is the aerial photo. You can see the attached condominiums in phase one. Phase one is to the north by Greenview, and then Woodside Circle is phase two. You can see that in the remaining parts of our phase three was to be, it's a fairly wooded site, it's got a lot of tree growth and scrub growth on the site at present. The development proposal was changed from the original sketch plan approval due to additional work on soil evaluation. The soils to the east side of the property, or wait, yeah, to the, on the right side of the, this development map, were seen to be more of a problem, and the development pattern in the previous approval was really pushing the buildings out into an area that was probably going to be suspect in terms of soil stability. The developer wants to do this in a phased approach, with phase one starting with two buildings to be started within 18 months of all approvals of the city departments. Phase two, two buildings to be started months, forgive, I've got a typo here, from city approval. Phase three would be two buildings between months 37 and 54, and phase four, three buildings to be completed in months 55 to 72. And the reason why the phasing is because if you want, would opt to approve the entire project, rather than have the timeline expire after a year, they would have the knowledge that they could come forward with final site plan without having to keep going through sketch plan over and over and over again. So that's the reason why the proposed phases. And Rob can clarify the, the phase, the timeframe on phase two. I superimposed in color the proposed development to show you that the development is pulled towards the center of the site instead of near the perimeter of the site. You, you can see in the black and white that there's units much closer to the adjoining developments under the formerly approved plan, and, and the reason why the concentration could happen is going to two-story buildings as opposed to one-story buildings, and as such, there's an opportunity to, to retain a natural buffer between this development project and the adjoining develop, condominium developments adjacent to it. These are the images the developer has supplied in terms of the look for, for the buildings. So you can see that it's not a real just basic box, there is some design element, changing of materials and so forth, and balcony decks and so forth, so there, there is a little bit of style that's been added to the, the building look. Basically, my recommendation, I could, I could see recommending approval of the full development or a portion of the development by phase, depending on the density you feel that is appropriate. I put in my staff report that we basically right now are in a housing crisis for the city. We're only seeing about five to 10 single-family home units being built every year. The housing studies for our county done by Networks Northwest, and I think there was a recent one done by Housing North, well, with the Networks Northwest, they had projected a demand for countywide of about, probably in the neighborhood of 2,000 housing units per year. I think that might be a little high, but even if you say 1,000 housing units per year, and Cadillac being the principal city in that, in the county, what would, what would we be expected to build out of that 1,000? You know, you're probably looking at at least 200 units per, per year, or something like that. We're not coming anywhere close to that. The city also does not receive any proposed... The city also does not receive any proposed plans for single-family development. And the reason for that is that the developers are not able to build single-family homes at a cost that the people living in this area can afford, or that most people cannot afford. The homes are coming in absolute lowest tend to be about two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And more often than not, they come in at about three hundred thousand dollars per unit to have a new single-family home. So that's kind of the issue of why we're not seeing proposals for single-family home development. And we're only seeing multifamily home development. And our current zoning ordinance is that we have very few remaining lots that are zoned for multifamily development. So it does make sense that folks will probably be looking at other types of opportunities. And that's true. We have the Cooley School Project, which this planning commission has been involved in and approved. We have the Lake Street Apartments that hopefully will be forthcoming within the next few months in terms of considering it within the downtown. And we have phase two of the lofts, which we're hoping will start next year. So we have all these different projects, but they're all coming in as multifamily projects, and none of them are coming in as single-family. So that really is an issue for the city. And we do have a housing committee that meets monthly, and anywhere from twenty to thirty people attend these meetings every month, and they're searching for opportunities of where can we go? How can we expand units? But that also impacts on economic development. If we were to look at try to attract new companies, which we from time to time have been lucky enough to be considered, sometimes those businesses are attracting or might generate upwards of, you know, anywhere from fifty to two hundred new jobs for the factories that might come into the city. And when we have a vacancy rate that's probably under one percent, it's very difficult to have a company look at us and say, well, we can handle bringing in employees and have a place to house them. So, and that's not to say that that should be the ultimate decision, but it is the background context for thinking about what we need to do citywide and where can we do that to create sufficient housing to start to put a little bit of a dent in the backup demand that we have. So I'm recommending that either in approving a phase one only or some other number of phases, that we try to move forward with some level of approval. We have the MEDC, which is offered to put in over five hundred thousand dollars into this project. And if we cannot approve any portion of the project, we might leave over half a million dollars on the table and be just pushed back a little further from seeing a start on new housing development. So just some issues that we have to think about. With that, I think I'll turn it over to Rob. I think he has a short presentation to cover some of the topics that I haven't covered.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Great, nice to meet you. Sounds like most of the people are here because of my project, so.
We didn't know you were handing out prizes.
I wasn't gonna be, I was hoping not to be quite this popular, so I'm sorry. And hopefully I'm not wasting anybody's time with this, but wanna share what. The top of this picture, and I'm not the best, you know, with these presentations, but this is kind of a snapshot of what one of those buildings is gonna look like. If anybody's seen any of my work, I came, for people that don't know me, since there's a lot of new people here, I came to town, I bought the Cobb's Mitchell Building that I redid. It's kinda neat, I see the award from the governor right there. So I also bought Better Bodies Building, tore down about two-thirds of that and redid that. I bought Old City Hall, that's been completely regutted. In the last year, I've put in, oh, between the elevator and the high-efficiency boilers, over a hundred and probably fifty thousand dollars, plus the whole remodel there. Cadillac Lofts, I'm the guy that had the purchase agreement on it, put all the upfront money to get that to the point where MEDC said, hey, we don't want you developing it this way. We want housing. So they stepped in, and I actually sold that. And then the Shea Locomotive across from the farmer's market, I participated. I don't really do construction work for anybody else other than for myself, and I did that on behalf of the city. The recent one I just got done is nine one nine and nine two nine North Mitchell Street, so where that subway's going in. I'm the north neighbor. So those two buildings that were looking pretty rough, you'll see that they're looking a lot better, and the parking lot's gonna get paved and some landscaping going in. So that's just a little bit of my background. And I really do love Cadillac, okay? I wouldn't be here tonight if I didn't. And there's a housing need, and so that's the reason I moved forward on this property. And the previous owner had the seventy units approved. So that's got us to tonight here. The next screen is phase one. To give you an idea, I was playing on just following phase one, phase two, and then go around the right and come down through there to develop that. John and I and Brian Newoff met Eric over there, and my concern is the neighbors. Everybody tonight can say, well, he's not concerned, but really I was because the previous plan, it was pushed all out, and it was going to, I mean, it's gonna change people's backyards. So what I wanted to do was bring everything in tight, create some walking so that, I don't know, like, looks like a three-looped eight in the middle. That's actually sidewalks there with landscaping. So the objective is to bring people into the middle instead of pushing them out towards the neighbors. And hopefully also bring the noise. And then the other concern was light pollution. This property's been vacant for some time, so all of a sudden, new building goes up, the city's gonna get complaints. And also, I don't wanna be a bad neighbor. I mean, the whole objective was to help bring housing to Cadillac. And so this was the option that I felt was the best suited for this piece of property. Give you a little bit of background on the project. Brian Newoff has done the topo and the survey. There has been a hydrology report for water runoff, and the property's been bored, soil boring. So site plan reflecting, reflects the wetlands and groundwater. As John mentioned, MEDC has offered me a grant for five hundred and forty-two thousand. I have to get eighteen units going this year. I gotta have it approved. If not, the money goes away. Market rate units, probably some people are wondering, is this gonna be Section Eight since I'm getting a grant? Okay, it's not gonna be Section Eight. I don't have any requirements. I don't have to have a percentage of people low income. So if anybody wonders, you know, what I'm gonna be doing, they're gonna be nice units. I mean, these are not gonna be cheap units. I am proposing seventy rental units. And I went with that number because that was on the previous approved plan. And I also had put that in the grant that it was approved previously for seventy units. It's designed toward, as I mentioned, towards the interior to avoid less interference with neighbors and interior walking paths. I've had this number question come up quite a bit recently. I don't just developing in Cadillac, I develop other places and invest other places, but this is one of the things communities are starting to ask about is unit sizes. There's been quite a few shortcuts happening. Give you an idea, prime interest rate in May twenty twenty-two was at four percent. Today, it's at eight and a half. And I know this is about planning, but the annual interest cost on one million dollars was forty thousand dollars back in twenty twenty-two. And that's really when we should have been developing more housing up here. Today, it's eighty-five thousand. So on a ten-unit, I need to have a return of at least eight fifty per unit on a million dollars. Well, it's not necessarily a ten-unit, but for a million dollars. Monthly interest cost on one million, three thousand three hundred and thirty-four. Today, it's seven thousand eighty-four. This is why when John mentions the single-family home issue, it's, in Grand Rapids, we're seeing houses selling for four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, which I thought I'd never see. Construction labor costs, as we all know, it's up. It's funny, when I got in, you know, when there was a change order, they'd say it's a hundred dollars. Now a change order's five thousand. I mean, that's just the consistent. Current SEV base for this property right now, sixty-one thousand two hundred. With it fully developed, it'd be four million two hundred and fifty thousand. Current annual tax bill, just shy of four thousand. Estimated, once it's fully developed, it's two hundred and sixty-six thousand. I put that on there because the only way Cadillac's going to really grow their revenue stream is through new development. Like when I go and buy one of these buildings that are offline, like Better Bodies, that was zero. It was foreclosed on, you know, it was at the state. Now, I'm paying a lot in property taxes. River Street that I bought also, now it's self-storage. I think I paid fourteen thousand dollars a year. Before, I think it had been off the tax rolls for twenty years. So we need good, smart development, and hopefully I'm trying to do my best to provide good, smart development. Vacancy rate in the area is near zero, which is actually bad. River Street, we are having to tell people weekly they can't live in a climate-controlled unit. That's, so it's rough. It's a rough thing. Annual new rental unit demand, this is from the August two thousand seventeen study that John referenced. We needed two hundred and three units per year. To my knowledge, the lofts is the only thing that's come in as far as anything at scale for apartments. And what, they have what, forty some units?
Their next phase is proposed at fifty because they're downgrading some of their commercial space.
So we're, even with putting up that building, we're at twenty-five percent. So you can see we got this gap. So I didn't try to disrupt these people's, neighbors' lives tonight by just coming in with, you know, hey, I wanna develop. I actually saw a need. I also, my other job is I run Exodus Place. I founded it with four homeless guys fifteen years ago. And we're the largest transitional housing facility in the state in Grand Rapids. So I have a real passion for helping people that need housing. So. This is the design. Instead of, I could have cheapened it up by just doing square, like saltbox designs. I felt this brings more of a character. It's more of a residential neighborhood feel versus a, I mean, there's a popular design right now, a thirty-two unit, that I could have put two of them up. It's actually less money, but it has a real institutional, a commercial look. And I felt like this design would be more pleasing to the neighbors and people driving by. That's it. As far as, you know, the neighbors, I'm probably offending a lot of them by doing this, and that was not my purpose. I know the unpaid road is a concern, density, people are concerned. I've talked to a couple neighbors over there, me removing all the trees. The design was designed this way, so I wasn't removing all the trees, and we could keep the area on the bounds preserved. And I know, you know, I'm gonna be changing the dynamics there, so there's gonna be new neighbors. One question was destroying wetlands. That's definitely not my intention. That's why I had Brian Newoff do the topo and the borings in the study, which is actually relatively expensive. This is not, it's not like you just go out and just do a hand, dig a hole. You have a boring equipment come in on a machine. And then noise during construction, you know, that's hard to avoid, so I apologize for that. Is there any questions from the board? This was a little bit more lengthy, so I apologize.
You're still gonna have a tree buffer along Kentucky, I assume, based on you saying not removing all the trees?
Well, the, it would be like a U shape. So if I go back here, so along Kentucky, there would, like, where the two units are, one and then directly to the south, those trees are gonna all get taken out, but then we'd have landscaping. But the very far south and far north, I was playing on preserving the mature trees.
Before we part with Mr. Munger, anybody have questions yet for him?
Are any of the floor units, are they handicap accessible?
They are. All the floor units are handicap accessible, and if you go, you'll see they can be entered from the exterior, so they don't have to be just an interior corridor, so the people can actually have some of their own private privacy. One of the biggest requests I've had up here is, or from people that are in their, let's say, sixty-five to eighty, they really aren't at a point where they wanna move into assisted living. They'd like to have something of their own. And so the mix is set up to allow for that. I also have a couple other floor plan designs where there would be a two-bedroom on each side and on the downstairs, and two bedrooms on each side on the upstairs. So they're gonna be mixed, so we could have a four-unit, a six-unit, eight-unit, and this is the ten-unit.
Could you put the sheet back up there? I had the list of different things, please. No, the other one. I just wanted to see if it answered some of my questions. Okay, it doesn't. It's just based on what you're gonna build with.
Correct.
My questions are simple. The, I'm not sure which order to say them in. What is your average cost per apartment per month? What's your target?
The lowest is eight hundred dollars a month, and that's for the smaller studio apartments. And then the others are gonna be right around thirteen hundred, it could be up to thirteen hundred.
Okay. And obviously, it's family or single. You said there's multiple bedrooms, so is this going to be one person, two people, a family? Are they going to live there?
Good question. It's not really, my demographic really isn't families as much as, let's say, a young couple with a child or two people that they would like to have their own bedroom. So let's say they rent a two-bedroom. This has become very popular throughout the United States, and they'll have their own bathroom. And so they can have actually a nice, brand-new unit versus like a house, you know, these infill houses downtown that are a hundred-plus years old. It's not meeting the young persons. It's not meeting the, the young person's, you know, desires.
Okay, the, actually, the targeted demographic per year, what's, what's the average salary that you're looking for that you see as a targeted demographic?
It could be as low as about 50,000 up to people in these units. I can see some people that are making $200,000 plus.
Okay, and I have one more question. And this is if I was going to be living near here. You see the road and the road is dirt, I believe. And you're going to have, how many units here total when you get done?
70.
Okay, you figure two cars per unit? Don't know. I know you don't know.
I don't know.
You don't know.
It's right now that because of, there's so much going on with transportation right now. John could lead that. So with Uber and EVs and everything else. But let's just say it's one and a half. So we're going to be right around 100.
Okay, and how many trips do you figure they're going to make in and out a day?
At least two, probably.
Okay, so they're going to go to work and come back, or they're going to go shopping and come back? Okay, I'm just, these are all questions we've asked everybody that comes in here and tries to do this because it's, it's a concern to these people because you're up and down the street.
Why let off, I said, hey, the unpaved road.
Yep, no, I, I, I just want, I want, I'm sure somebody will bring this up. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands on the board, how many cars are going to go in and out of there? And then my next question would be, is this road going to be paved anytime soon?
Well, it's not a zoning question. It's more a city policy question.
Okay. Marcus, how are you, buddy?
Good. So the roads within the development itself, they would require to be paved. But the main road, the city street, which is Kentucky, for whatever the reason was, back when that whole area was developed, was left unpaved. There are options in terms of getting that road paved. That could, that could be anything from the, the creation of a special assessment area to looking at trying to piggyback on the value of the development that Mr. Munger is presenting to see if that could open up the doors to additional outside funding that could be used for such infrastructure. But we, you know, until we know really what the project's going to be and when it's moving forward and how, it's too premature to, to, to try to put, put another package together. We do have, from time to time, folks that come to the city council with a request to have a road paved or an alleyway paved or a sidewalk, you know, put in. Those are the, you know, those are common requests, not unlike what, what is being discussed here regarding Kentucky. And it would be the same type of solution, which is, you know, the, the neighborhood, the area could look at a special assessment that would offset those costs if there isn't some other, you know, economic development activity happening that's adjacent to it that could be wrapped up as a part of it. So this is a special situation where that might be a possibility.
Okay. And there's no, no way to have another entrance or exit to go into the other part of this that's already built?
I, I, I don't want to, well, I'm going to speak on behalf of John for a moment here. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, you know, part of the overall site plan development is to not disturb the woods that create the buffer between the pre-existing phases where the other condominiums exist and/or to create additional traffic impact or flow that would have a direct impact on the pre-existing residential development. The traffic flow, traffic pattern as it is currently being presented will protect the pre-existing residential neighborhoods as well as their views of the wooded areas and whatnot.
Thank you. I'm not trying to be hard on you. I'm just asking.
No, it's great.
If I lived there.
Great question.
Well, that's why I brought it up in the beginning because I totally agree.
The first thing somebody's going to say is, well, this is section eight and you're going to have all this crime and all this stuff. You're not going to have that. The demographics are above that. You're, you're going to have a, people like me that are going to live there or like the people here.
Or me. Right now I can't rent anything that's nice in an apartment unit up here. There's nothing available.
No. Actually, there wasn't a 95 when I moved here either. You couldn't find anything. That's why I'm on this board.
So, I mean.
Are you still homeless?
And I'm still homeless, yeah. I live in the back on his porch.
Rob, will you have onsite management?
It will, not like the old days where you actually had somebody onsite. It'll be more on-call, so.
There will be somebody available all the time?
All the time, 24/7. It's just like my self-storage units. It's 24/7. I mean, they're not operate, you know, we're not manning the phone 24/7, but there's alarms on both of my self-storage facilities I have up here. So if somebody broke in, I get alert on my cell phone. And then I have two people dedicated to each, each project. So it'll be more robust than that.
I think it'll be an important thing that people had somebody they could get a hold of if they have an issue.
Yeah. If you ask anybody, I think you could ask any of my tenants up there here. All of them are going to tell you that if they call, I immediately react. Bob Durantson here, he handles my plumbing and HVAC. He's been handling that for probably the last six years. And I'm good friends with Rose at his office too. And so I'm big on customer service. You can, you go through any of my buildings, please do. Because if you get one tenant that says I'm not who I say I am, I'm taking care of customer service, I'll be shocked. Because they all know I'm, I'm emphatic, emphatic about getting good customer service.
Okay, I think that'd be a very important thing for people.
Anything else?
Nope. You're good.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate. Okay, folks, this is, I'm going to give you your time to come forth. So at this time, we're going to open public hearing and boy, some can't wait. Sure, I, I already gave you a time thing. If you would, if you hear the same thing getting said, try and shy away from that. If you've already heard it four or five times, okay? And thank you.
Thank you. My name is Lori Sorenson. I live at 258 Greenview Circle at Edge View Condominiums. I'm also the president of Edge View Condominiums Association. And I'm here with many neighbors, but three of our members as well. While I have many concerns about the development, I will just address a few. And some of the other board members will address a few as well. And I know there are plenty of neighbors that want to speak as well. We have provided a detailed list in a form of a letter of our concerns. And I'm assuming that all of you received that and had the time to review that a little bit. We're just going to review a few of the bullet points with you tonight to make sure that, that, that those, you know that those are our concerns. First of all, the size of the site. The public notice prepared for the hearing specifies a site of 3.95 acres. The application, a copy of which was provided to the public, indicates a site size of 7.13 acres. The project narrative provided as part of the application further identifies the project as located on a site of 7.13 acres. Which size is correct and why is there a notable difference between the notice and the application? Secondly, this is a sketch plan. In section 46 through 645 of the zoning ordinance lists the elements to be included in the, in the PUD sketch plan. It does not appear all the required elements have been shown. For instance, under parking and circulation, the PUD standards specify as part of the sketch plan, the applicant must show the location and the right-of-way of the dimensions of all public highways, streets, alleys within 300 feet of the proposed project, together with the location, width and use of all adjoining public or private driveways and internal roadways. The instrument we are provided appears limited to the project site. Do they include the 300-feet requirement? Thirdly, the housing density levels and the city master plan. This high-density project is proposed for a placement on one of the city's most restrictive areas pursuant to density. The master plan district map on page 25 of the master plan calls for the area to support medium-to-low-density development with sites ranging from 6,000 to 12,500 square feet at 3.5 to 7.3 units per acre. Assuming the public notice to be correct, the Copper Trails project is located on an approximate 3.9-acre site resulting in a, in a house density of approximately 20 units per acre at 2,427 square feet per unit. Page 28 of the city master plan, Housing and Neighborhood Plan objectives encourages the placement of medium-to-high-density apartments and residential condominiums within or near the central business district. In fact, the planned unit development ordinance under which this project is proposed was largely advanced to provide for high-density apartments in the downtown on a, on small lots. We believe the zoning tool is being used to circumvent good planning and that development is inconsistent with the city master plan. I also have one other item I wanted to, I guess, bring to all of your attention just because I, I'm not sure where it's coming from. Mr. Wallace and Mr. Munger both have said it. I'm retired and I retired a few years ago from Wexford County where I served as the Wexford County Register of Deeds. And, and my tenure there, we recorded the Edge View Condominium Master Deed. And it did have the phase one that was proposed in the first master deed that was approved and recorded. It also had in that master deed, the, the possibility of phase two and the potential of phase three. So a few years went by and, and another amendment to the condominium and phase two is built. Phase three never did get there and so that was not approved. And phase three, not only was it not approved and didn't go through the process or the steps with us, it looked different than what you're seeing here. It had a road that connected Edge View Condominiums to this site because it was going to be Edge View Condominium and apartments. And that never came to fruition and the road's not there. And the proprietor kept that 7.13 acres. And I, so I just, I kind of object to that being said, that it was approved already. Approved where? It did not come through our committee of condominium subdivision board, which I chaired. So I'm not sure what that was. So now I'd like to, thank you for letting me speak. And I'd like to introduce other board member, Luanne. If I can, please. Sign my name here.
Thank you.
Okay, the two bullet points of our document that you all have, I'm going to focus on. I'm sorry, I'm Luanne Sherman, 256 Greenview in the condos. I'm sorry. One of the bullet points is traffic impacts. And Kevin, you are asking questions about the traffic impact with this development. And we've put together some numbers here, so I'm going to include that right now. Using traffic generation manuals, we've estimated the full development will possibly generate approximately 490 to 630 vehicular trips per day, the majority of which will likely travel Kentucky Avenue between the development and Sunnyside Drive. The counts do not include commercial vehicles such as postal vehicles, large-moving vans and other such traffic. Though the levels may seem somewhat minor, we feel they are significant given the character of the area's development and the unimproved condition of Kentucky Avenue between the project site and Michigan Avenue. Importantly, it is noted that the Kentucky-Michigan and the Kentucky-Sunnyside Drive intersections are designed as skewed versus perpendicular intersections. The Sunnyside Drive intersection is of particular concern given its high traffic volumes, higher speed limits, prevalence of bicycle traffic and high number of people crossing Sunnyside during the summer to assess, access Lake Cadillac. Skewed intersections have been found to cause safety and operational issues for road users. Based on the traffic safety literature, results consistently show crash frequency to increase with skewed angle intersections. So the question is, has there been any type of traffic analysis completed for this project by qualified personnel? And my other bullet point has pretty much been addressed. I'll be real quick on this. It's the density issue. The overall site characteristics and size of the, of the two developments, meaning Sunnyside Development and Copper Trails are markedly different. Unlike the Copper Trails projects, the Edge View apartment component was an integral part of Edge View's 54-acre site in which the overall housing density, including condos and apartments, was slightly less than one-half acre per unit. The Edge View project included the preservation of extensive open space, protection of the wetlands, curvilinear paved streets designed for pedestrian and vehicular traffic, multiple access points, preservation and protection of forested areas for the benefit of wildlife, large surface water drainage areas, fully enclosed trash receptible areas, residentially-designed storage building for the placement of equipment and other such feature. Wanted to make sure this is made, made clear to the planning commission. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, Luanne.
The next person is Katie Taberski.
Hi, everyone. My name's Katie Taberski. I live at 328 Woodside Circle at Edge View Condos. And I'm also a member of the board, as you've heard. The three little bullet points that I'll bring forth are environmental concerns where the area of the proposed development supports one of the city's largest natural wetland locations. On page six of the city master plan, it specifically references Kentucky Avenue as one of those city prime wetland locations. Edge View condos, which abuts a portion of the project, Copper Trails, is general, generally, excuse me, surrounded by wetlands. We have taken significant steps to both recognize and protect those. Given the prevalence of the wetlands in the project area, has a determination study been completed at all for the new project site by qualified personnel and provided to both the planning commission and the Michigan Environmental, Great Lakes and Energy Department to review? Second item to me, site landscaping. The site plan provided no specific indication of the landscape to be employed pursuant to type, location and design, even at a basic or preliminary level. Of particular concern is the landscaping treatment and wetlands along the perimeter of the site relating to the abutting properties. The applicant's project narrative states the development incorporates, quote, "expansive green areas carefully landscaped to create a tranquil oasis for residents and guests," end quote. If stated as such in this narrative, shouldn't that plan demonstrating those green areas and landscaping been provided to the commission for review? and landscaping been provided to the commission for review? Lastly, drainage, site lighting, trash storage, and rec center. Although I do understand that there's been a proposal to move the rec center, the plan did offer little if any information on site drainage, site lighting, trash collection and removal, and related items. We did ask the city engineer for a report on these matters, but we were not provided one by the staff, and I'm not sure whether the commission here has seen that at all. Those are my three items, and I would like to introduce Linda Weatherall.
Thank you, Katie.
Katie, you're right up here. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Linda Weatherall, and I reside at 224 Greenview Circle, and I am also on the board. I have about nine bullet points, but I will make it quickly, swiftly, just to keep you all happy.
Okay.
We feel the proposed project is inconsistent with the character of the site and the surrounding development. Two, overburdens the site, given its small size and character. Three, adds significant traffic volumes to a rural roadway that experiences issues with respect to its design and present development. Of note is a skewed design of the nearby intersections. Number four is inconsistent with the city master plan. Five, does not provide the site plan information as required by the Cadillac zoning ordinance. Six, circumvents the purpose and intent of the PUD ordinance as expressed by the city during prior presentations. It is our understanding that the use of PUD ordinance on small sites was to be oriented to site characterized by sound, high-density development, urban amenities, sidewalks, etc. Seven is inconsistent with prior plans developed for the greater Edgeview project site. The proposed project greatly exceeds the density of the Edgeview project based on the overall site size and does not match the overall open-space design character of the Edgeview project. Justification for this project based on the application of a single component of a prior never-developed project is not reasonable. Eight, does not represent an appropriate improvement to the site or neighborhood and does not match the site's qualities of surrounding development as required by the zoning ordinance. Nine, city staff report, a public record, provided to the Planning Commission indicates compliance with the PUD review standards of the ordinance but offers virtually no detail or support on the justification for their findings. And that is a concern for us. It is our opinion, the current zoning and local demand provide opportunity for the site to be marketed and developed consistent with the character of the neighborhood development along Kentucky Avenue. The current zoning is consistent with the city master plan provides for the site to be developed in ways that will recognize and protect that area's environmental and neighborhood qualities. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Because I haven't called it yet, no.
I thought I was number zero.
Oh, okay.
My name is Cyrus Crowder, and I live at 228 Greenview Circle in Edgeview Condominiums. I'll get my name in here. I don't know if the questions that were submitted up before this meeting were provided to you ahead of time with any attachments, if you have those copies. My main question, and they've talked about it to some extent, was the wetlands. And when I pull up the Eagle Wetlands map viewer and looking at wetlands inventory from the National Wetlands Inventory System and Michigan Resource Inventory System and superimpose this plan on top of them, it is clear that there will be some areas of wetland that are destroyed if this development goes ahead. My question is, have any permits been obtained or anything been done to perhaps create a compensating wetland somewhere else as these are being destroyed? And have any permits been obtained or have been sought from the government agencies involved? Can I have that question? And I don't know if anyone is prepared to answer it for me.
At a point when I close public hearing, we will review all these questions.
Oh.
Staff will help us out.
Very good.
Otherwise, I'm going to tie us all up.
I understand.
But...
Okay, thank you.
And thank you.
The Kentucky Road has already been addressed. I had some pictures, but I assume everybody knows what Kentucky Road looks like and so forth. The rec center has been changed in the plan from what was distributed in the council. My third question is a moot point at this point.
A problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Chad Marquardt. I live over on 214 Kentucky Avenue. So we have lived at this residence since 2003, twenty-one years. Raised my family there. Wife and I planned on retiring there. When we moved to that house in 2003, we weren't in love with the house, but we were in love with the neighborhood. We were in love with the fact that you're now right on top of each other. You don't have high volumes of traffic. In the twenty-one years I've lived there, most of my neighbors have been there that time, too. We've seen a few new faces, but they're people that come in. They're long-term residents to that neighborhood. So one concern I would have with this plan, it doesn't really give a... So the north driveway looks like it's potentially coming right across the street from my house, where I have bedrooms on the front side of the house. So I can't imagine the headlights coming across at night, the traffic pulling out under acceleration. That's greatly going to impact our quality of life, I believe. So that is one major concern I have. And the other major concern that I have is the majority of the houses are, I guess, homestead be... The people live there, you know, they're long-term residents. They live there. We know our neighbors. It's quiet. With this type of development, it's not necessarily going to be long-term housing. As Mr. Mungar said, maybe a younger couple with one kid, but when they want to have that second kid, they're going to be looking for long-term. So you're going to see a volume of turnover at some point there, which... But just the amount of traffic is going to be crazy compared to what we have now. If that apartment would have been across the street, we would have never considered the house. We would have moved on to another neighborhood. We lived in town on Laurel Street previously, and it was just too busy for us. And so when we were looking, we looked for quite a while, actually a couple of years before we found a home. And when we found that home there, we knew it was our home. It's not just a house. That's our home. And so I feel if this goes across the street from me with that drive there, I'm within fifteen years of retirement, we'll be trying to figure out how we're going to start over someplace else at high interest rates, all the things that Mr. Mungar brought to light. So it's really going to put me into a pickle. So it's a, that's a big thing. One of the things, when I read through the site plan, it stated that this is the third and final plan. But then it goes on to say, but if building costs go down, they could be condos, or they could be, you know... So that's obviously not the final site plan. If it could be condos, if it could be, that's going to change because this plan isn't condos. And the other thing I kind of had wrote down, I feel like we're kind of taking your word for it. I can't believe that something that was agreed upon in 1994 wouldn't have... My son is, was born in '04. He's going to graduate with his bachelor's degree next year. So I think something that happened thirty years ago, I have a hard time believing that would still be relevant today. And that was a total, like, that was an extension to Edgeview. And I believe what happened at that time is it was agreed upon that the developer was going to pave Kentucky because they weren't going to allow more units in Edgeview without a second entrance. And they were going to be... So we've talked about special assessments, but I don't know what the... If special assessment is that me paying for the road for this development, for him to make a wonderful profit? You know? Because that dirt road right now is about a single lane on a good day. It's rutted, it's... Everybody comes down through there, busting through the mud, everything else. I can't imagine that volume of traffic on that road and to stick that on the... If this does go through, to put that on the people there, that's just, that's just unacceptable. So I kind of had some bullet points. I want to not go too far off that. Like I said, the... So I guess what I would like to end with is, you know, I believe the folks in the condos, the folks that live across the street from it, the folks that are going to be impacted, I don't think we're resistant to change because I moved into that neighborhood in 1989 as a teenager with my parents, who still live in the neighborhood, and they're retired there. We've seen a lot of change in that neighborhood in that time. In, it was housing. It was single residential homes. So we've seen that neighborhood build and grow over time. So we're not resistant to change, but this doesn't fit. It doesn't fit that area, that quiet area that we've... You know, myself paid taxes on, I know there's people probably forty-plus years in this group that have paid taxes and lived in that neighborhood, and you're going to change what we bought into, you're going to change our homes, you're going to change... It's going to be ridiculous. So I really hope that there'll be some careful consideration on this, and I believe I got everything in that I'd like to say. So I definitely appreciate your time.
You too. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate it.
Hi.
Hello. My name's Rhonda Nelson, and I live at 316 Kentucky Avenue. Been there for forty-seven years. And I would like to just touch on the street to say that Kentucky Avenue is not just a city street. It is in conjunction with the county. Our home is at the south end of the city limits. Beyond that, the county is responsible for the road as well. So anything that goes beyond where this development is is going to be impacted by the county as well. I mean, the city does part of the maintenance of our street. The county also does our street. And neither one, quite frankly, is doing a very good job. But, and if we are assessed for road improvements, those, it's only seven property owners that you would put that burden on to pave that street. Seven of us. That's a lot to put on property owners. A very, very great amount. And I do want to take just a little bit of, I don't know even what the word would be here. If Mr. Mungar believes that the rent will be high enough to keep crime out of there, he isn't watching the news. Rich people commit crimes. This will be a transient population. This will not be people who are there for forty years. These people will be here for three months, they'll move on. They're not going to be here very long. And you all seemed, just by watching you, I mean, everyone has been very, very engrossed in this, and I appreciate that you listen. I've been to meetings where too busy playing with their pencils to listen. And you seem to be impressed by the fact that he has encapsulated this, and his little walkways, and this will keep it all in this little area. You miss the point. We're a neighborhood. We walk with people half a mile down the road. We all know each other. That's what you're going to lose. We're not going to have that neighborhood. They're not going to be neighbors because they're not going to be there long enough. We're all neighbors. We help each other. We borrow things from each other. If somebody needs a hand, that's what we do. But you're going to take that away with this development, and that's a shame. It really is, because that's what Cadillac needs to be. So thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm Carol Wolfgram, and I live at 204 Kentucky, Michigan, right on the corner. We have lived here, not like everybody else, we have lived here for a little over a year, and it has already had changes. It's at 204 Kentucky. My big concern is we already have a traffic problem. We have a speeding problem. It is a speedway posted twenty-five miles an hour. I have reported school buses to the schools and got no response because they travel at least forty, forty-five, fifty miles an hour. I can hear them coming before they even get on our road. Who's going to monitor the traffic on a twenty-five, posted twenty-five mile an hour? Police going to come out and sit? That was going to be my next thing, was to call the police department, ask if they would come sit in our driveway at four o'clock every day, because nobody seems to care. The other thing is I live very close also to where the driveways are going to be. We're probably going to have children playing. Right now, we don't have a lot of small children, but we will have small children. When they're out in that road, what's going to happen? Are the school buses and the chimney sweep people that come through here every day, they go through three, four, five, six times a day, and that's not a car, that's a truck? So Kentucky Avenue is going to take a lot of beating. Currently in front of our house, we have probably as long as that huge hole because nobody comes to fill it. It rains, you get a pool. We have a, the truck, the bus that people take, the public bus, and he backs up every day. He backs up, he goes right through that hole and almost goes on our lawn. They've knocked down our street signs on our corner. So this is my number-one concern. I'd like to know if it's going to be addressed. I'm trying to figure out what my phone number is here. We have done a lot of work in our place. There's, it's a big dust issue, so the traffic that we have now is just going to be multiplied. I'm sure there's probably going to be at least two vehicles at every place that's going to be there. That will be more cars than our whole neighborhood has. And I'm talking Michigan, Kentucky, Indiana, Illinois, Iowa. Put them all together, and we won't have as many cars as they will have in that unit. So I would like that to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Good evening.
Hello. I'm Marcia Noaker, and I live at the corner of Kentucky and Michigan. Have been there for forty years. I hate myself because I do this every day. When they applied for their permit for the original, I fought then against it because of the traffic, and the traffic has tripled. Excuse me. I'm sorry. I like some of my neighbors now. At that time, I didn't want them there, okay, because of the traffic. I hear it coming off Sunnyside. You can hear them start, just floorboard it, and by the time they get to Michigan, they got to be going fifty miles an hour, some of them. They don't come through... At that time, I didn't want them there, okay? Because of the traffic. I hear it coming off Sunnyside. You can hear them start, just floorboard it, and by the time they get to Michigan, they got to be going fifty miles an hour, some of them. They don't come through like they should, and sand and salt the road. When it's dry, the dust is horrible. It's, you know, the people that live on the corner, on the other corner, they can't have their windows open because of the dust. Now, my point, when they first applied, we fought it. They said at that time, if they would put this unit up, they would pave Kentucky.
You're correct.
Okay. So why not? But we do need speed bumps. Big ones.
You already got the bumps.
No, oh yeah, no, but it's not the way we would...
Very, very surprised.
They are horrible. I don't have to travel that.
Right, you're before them.
I'm, you know, I'm before that. I'm right on the corner. I see it coming off Michigan and out of the condos all the time. We have a few come out of the neighborhood. We don't have sidewalks. We have kids that play on the roads because we don't have sidewalks. I walk, I don't know how many people here walk. We have to walk in the road.
Right.
So, you know, you put seventy units with four people, that's a lot of people in that neighborhood. It's my point. And I think they should pave it if we're going to. And it's nice to see you, Johnny.
Likewise. It's been a while. See, you got your young hubby over there.
Still got him. He hangs around. Fifty-five years.
Man, man, here.
We've already got that.
We've got, we've got everything.
We've got it.
We've got everything, Marsha.
Apparently you guys didn't get them or something.
I just wanted to speak because I've lived here for over thirty years. I've seen some good changes. First, we were a little skeptical with the condos. Now we're all one big family. We really are. They walk our streets. It's, it's, it's a good thing, but this just doesn't fit into this wetlands. When I moved there, it was always told me, it's always wetlands, it was always swampy. The kids fish back there. They really did. And with, with addressing the Kentucky Avenue, one fifteen, it's the best cut-through you got in the whole city to come from one fifteen to Sunnyside Drive. Holiday weekend, it's a freeway. Or if there's a problem with accidents, the cars flow through. You think, what the hell's going on? A parade? But, you know, this is an R-one residential district. The R, what is it now they want? Is R-P-U-D? To change this zoning? That's what I see in my packet.
Yes.
Maybe, I hope I'm correct.
You're good. Close enough.
But, you know, I'm kind of old-school. I think, you know, and I, I want to help people that need housing. I understand that. We got a project with Cooley. I don't know where we're at with that. There's ten large apartment complexes in this town now, a lot of rental units. I don't, I just don't, you know, I know there's other places that this could probably be located and that would suit better. The one, I'm trying to think of the name down, Sunnyside Estate, I believe it is, they put that one in, and the developer, he paved the road. He ended up paving for the road. It was kind of a good fit because it actually sets back in there, no houses adjacent to it. And I think we need to look at more ideas like that than to come in and ruin it. These people with the condos, we all have investments. Your people that rent apartments, they, they got rent payment, they don't have investments like we do, and the respect for the neighborhood, it just kind of bothers me that, you know, these people with the condos, they've invested and they're going to be backed up with apartments. No matter how much you want to say, I'm sure they're going to enjoy a lot of noise, people cutting through, and, uh, I don't know what the real answer is other than I'm a no on that, on this. You know, okay, I'll leave it at that?
You can.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I was just going to ask if anybody in the nosebleed section was coming, but, you know. Hi.
Hi.
How's Linda?
I'm Linda Durant, and I do not live in that neighborhood.
Okay.
I live on the other side of the lake.
Yes.
And as far as speeding goes, it's happening everywhere. North Boulevard is a racetrack, and it's supposed to be twenty-five. I understand that the neighbors are upset, and I understand why. But we do need housing. Any place, if you can find another area for this type of project to be built, somebody next door's not going to like it. They're going to say, I, I know we need it, but not in my neighborhood. We get that with a lot of projects. People like something, but, oh, don't put it in my neighborhood. A lot of Cadillac has had wetlands that are no longer there. I grew up in this town. I've been here for seventy-two years. I'm third-generation born here. My family came here in the eighteen hundreds. Most of Cadillac was wetlands. Just in my time that I can remember, Holly Road was a wetland. It was filled in. Nobody's objecting about that. We used to play there. It was a wonderful habitat and wetlands. That's all changed. Chestnut Street, from Lake Street to the high school, that was all wetlands. And that's been filled. It's very nice now. Nice walkway. When I was a kid, that was our playground. Because I lived on West Pine Street. That's all changed. And I understand, and I understand, I understand that they think it's going to be too congested, but a lot of the neighborhoods are getting very congested. And we do need housing. I don't know what the answer is. Pardon me?
You got the floor.
Okay.
All yours.
You can't put it in my backyard because there's no room in my backyard.
Gotcha. Not anymore.
No, not anymore. That is true. Kenwood Park is filled right up. But, and you're talking about the pay, the, the road, Kentucky. I understand that, but like it was pointed out, part of it is city and part of it is county. Have, has it been looked into how much it would be to pave the city part, which would take it from this development to Sunnyside? Maybe that would solve part of the problem. And maybe, maybe that is something that could be built into this project. But, that's all I got to say.
Well, thank you, though. You did a fine job.
Johnny, I mentioned that, I'm going to add one question. And they probably all want to know, is this going to affect our property values?
We'll, we'll bring that up at the end. Actually, all your questions are going to get brought up at the end when I close public hearing. Right now, I'm just trying to give everyone a chance to speak.
Hi, I'm Andy Ulrich. I manage the United Way for the Wexford and Mesaki Counties. And I, I hadn't seen this specific project, but I have been working with the housing group that's meeting on a monthly basis. And I just wanted to just say some of where the statistics about kind of the housing issues. We do have, our data is that we're short thirty-one hundred units in our area. You know, so if we built three hundred units outside of Cadillac, it'd be full in three months. And we have the highest increase, and I know this, you know, for, of our two counties of homelessness, we have people living in their cars, and we, we do need affordable housing. Whether we do this one or not, I, I would hope that you'd approve this one or the next one, you know, because we do, we have a lot of pressures on this, especially within the city limits. And from a developer point of view, it's really hard to attract developers here. The interest rates are high, that really knocks it down. And then if someone is going to build, if you can get a rent here for like you were saying, you know, thirteen hundred dollars, in Traverse City, if you can get twenty-two or twenty-five hundred dollars a unit, then they're going to build over there, and they are. There's, that's where all the development is happening. And so we do need something in our area, whether it's this project or the next one, to say it is a real thing. I would also say, like, I, I do know Rob Munger, and he is, I do feel like he's a person of integrity, and he's really helped the veterans community, especially with homelessness and other things with some of his other projects. And so I think he is a straight shooter when he's talking. That's all I have to say.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Andy.
I'm not going to talk, I split.
We only give everybody one turn.
And one pen.
You can take as many pens as you like. Anybody else in the nosebleed section? Back there? Or you in the front?
Not sure how much I can add to this, but I just think one thing that needs to be taken into account.
Sure.
So, my name's Cameron Markwart. So, it has been mentioned that the studio apartments, well, some studio apartments that are going to be located in there and they're normal sizing, studio is going to be looking at about eight hundred dollars per month with normal apartments being about thirteen hundred. And it said the, the median salary was going to be about fifty thousand to make that affordable. And I just thought it would be kind of useful to look into what we have for salaries in Cadillac as compared to, is that housing really affordable? Is what I'm saying. You know, I, I'm definitely impartial to a lot of situations of people living in their car and being homeless, but, you know, is an apartment that costs thirteen hundred dollars a month going to be in their price range? Is it really going to solve that problem of homelessness and affordability? So, and not to mention, going off on another tangent here, you know, the wetlands in that, that area, I don't think you can see it on the map, but there's actually a lake out in those woods. And it was recently partially drained because there was a freshwater pumping site put there for the city of Cadillac, which alongside that fact, it seems like they've went in and they've partially worked with the site. They haven't destroyed wetlands, really. So what I'm saying is there's obviously a way that you can put infrastructure in there, and you can work with the wetlands without destroying it. And we're looking at potential destruction of wetlands in this area. I mean, I'm nineteen now. That site has been wetlands my entire life. I've had much time to enjoy it with friends and, and the neighborhood and that kind of thing. So, again, I know these have already been said, but it's just things that we need to look at. So I appreciate your time.
Appreciate yours. Thank you.
Looks like the list is full up here. You just want me to write to the bottom?
Yeah, you can put it over there.
Turn it over.
Oh, yeah. I'll turn it up. I'll just write my name on there when everybody's done.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Cameron. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mary Beth Champlin, and my husband and I own the home at three oh two Kentucky. And there are a couple of points I want to make. One is that Kentucky Avenue is a well-traveled thoroughfare between one fifteen and Sunnyside. So that will be traveled even more if this unit, housing unit goes in. The other is that I'm very concerned about the board, the planning board here taking a good look at what the wildlife and the wetlands, how they will be affected, and to really be careful with that because there's been development all over the city, but we need to preserve what we have left. And the third point I want to make is that if this housing unit goes in, the developer and the people who have invested in it, they will realize the profits from that. But the people who own property there will not gain anything if we also have to pay to have that paved. We'll be paying, but we won't make any gains from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody good? Everybody got to say or hear what you needed, I guess? Because we, you gave us a boatload of info. Big time. And we appreciate that. That's why we're here. So if everybody's good, I'm going to close public hearing, and we'll start addressing some of your questions so that we can continue. So at this time, I'm closing public hearing, so everybody is done talking to us, kinda. And then, okay, ah, I don't know where to start on all the questions, so I'm going to look at staff for a second. Or do I need Mr. Munger?
Just write my name.
Okay.
No further. Promise you.
Probably all of them.
Because there's a boatload of stuff that needs to be answered, I guess, and we're, we're not in that driver's seat. So I'm going to, I'm going to look at John then.
Well, I think to some degree, and if Rob's here, let him address it, but I think they have looked at the wetland issue.
Yeah.
But I'll let him address that. The city's engineer has also been involved in the site design, so I'm sure they would be quite familiar with the wetland component. So maybe Rob can address what work they've done on that front.
Okay. And something does stick in the back of my head about that being paved. Been on this board long enough. Yeah. And something sticks in my mind that that was to be paved as a requirement.
I've been doing this for about twenty-four years or so.
Yep, yep. So, anyway.
You want the question answered on the wetlands?
Sure.
Yes.
We'll start there, if, if we could.
Rob, you know...
Please.
Wetland determination's been done?
Yes, Pryon Newoff did the wetland determination. That's why I emailed the hydraulic study to you, John. So, and then, that's not protected wetlands. It's not all protected, and that, that's, that's a misunderstanding from a lot of people. There's critically protected wetlands, and then there's a non-critical wetlands. So I'm not disturbing any critical wetlands. The critical wetlands is actually on the southeast corner, so...
Do you want the clicker?
You're right, hadn't told us.
Yeah, so right where you see like the writing under, you know, so opposite of the N there, down below, that's the critical wetlands. And so we shrunk this subdivision up, so I wasn't going to be disturbing that.
Okay.
As it gone is as far, and I know vaguely about the process with, I think DNR now handles wetlands, not?
Egle, I think, still.
Does Egle still handle it, or is DNR? But is it, has there been any interactions with them?
With DQ or Eagle?
Well, it's not DQ anymore.
I know, it keeps changing.
And then DNR, I think, also is...
There's been very little, there's not as much involvement anymore. Usually you get a, like, a Pryon Newoff in, in like Grand Rapids, I use Excel Engineering. Oh, you get our King, there's King and McGregor in Grand Rapids also. We have to get it like a specialist that goes out and does that report. And that, that's what we rely on, so. It's not like the old days with the DNR. It's just different.
Does it, do you know, does it need either EGLE or DNR approval if it is designated?
Well, if I was disturbing critical, then I would. So if somebody made a good comment or, in the audience, is, if it was critical, then we, if we're going to disturb that, then we need to acquire property in another place, like in a fly zone with, you know, waterfowl and do something. But we're not disturbing critical. A lot of people don't, you can actually cut down, you know, cactails, you just can't dig into the ground. So there's, you know, what's perceived and what's reality with the eagle and, or DLEG. There's, there's quite a few rules, but this isn't touching critical wetlands. There's, there's quite a few rules, but this isn't touching critical wetlands.
And then I, one of the ladies here with the convo, something about the size, why it...
There's two different sizes.
Two different sizes.
Provided, one was three point nine five acres and the other was seven point one three acres. Can you address that?
It's, it's a seven point one acres.
Seven one point one three.
Yeah, I, I drew on GIS today and, yeah, and that's the correct, the correct size.
I didn't, I don't know where the three came from.
What else do we need? Rob, I know there was so many questions.
Do you wanna pave the road?
It would be very nice. That was one of my first questions I talked to the city about.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, that definitely has to happen as part of this.
No, I don't. Yeah.
Well, how do you do it? It's not part of your financial model, so I'm sure. Two million dollar road from Michigan to forty-one or forty-four?
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Forty-four, right.
Something stuck in my mind that they weren't gonna pave the whole thing, just up to a project. But I'm flashing back here. I don't know.
So, Marcus, can you repeat what you said earlier about options for getting that road paved? Some of the resources that we could reach out to?
Sure. Sure. So, just as a disclaimer, if I may, what I'm going to say is not me as city manager dictating X, Y, or Z must happen. Planning Commission is the policy level board can put whatever conditions you may or may not wish to put on any development at any time as a part of your consideration process. When it comes to paving an unpaved road or a question of how does, how does a city have a road or an alleyway or an area that is not paved or doesn't have a sidewalk or other infrastructure like street lighting or other, other things, typically what you find is that when a development to create said subdivision or said area or neighborhood, whenever that was put in, it wasn't required. Or maybe it was required, but only until it hit a certain threshold or a certain phase. I, I am not as familiar with what happened thirty years ago or whenever the timeframe was as perhaps some of the folks on the planning commission is. But what it sounds like is that there may have been some kind of commentary that when this project phases in, there will be the necessity for a road to be, to be paved from, you know, A to B. Is that the full stretch or is that just simply to wherever the driveway would be? I, I couldn't tell you, but I can tell you that, that today's planning commission can certainly make a determination that's different than a planning commission that was, that was done once before. In terms of options, there are tools that are available today that didn't exist before. As a, for instance, there's now a Brownfield Residential Tax Inc. Financing District Program that is out there in which the developer, pending on the increased, projected increased value of, of the development, that could be captured and used to reimburse costs of infrastructure such as, such as public roads or lighting or sidewalks or other, other such things. I, I, I don't know, as I sit here today, whether or not there is an opportunity for cost sharing with the county, with the city, with the developer. Maybe there is, maybe there isn't. Another tool that I mentioned earlier is the special assessment tool where you would take all of the adjacent property owners that have footage. You develop a formula. In fact, our charter, I believe, already has a formula in place as to how that would then be offset over however many years. It's levied on people's taxes. Probably not the most popular idea. Typically, when those get brought forward, they got, they get brought forward by a local champion. So, you'll find somebody that lives in any given neighborhood in the city that says, hey, you know what? Wouldn't it be great if we could get our alley paved? And then they talk to their neighbors and then they talk to us and we go, we come up with an engineer's estimate for what it might cost to get your alley paved. And then, you know, we bring it to city council when we believe that we have at least a majority of those folks that are, that are willing to do it. And we either do it or we don't do it because they learn, oh, wait a minute, you know, the estimate is off and it's really gonna be a whole different cost. Or, you know, there's a change up in the neighborhood and now there's more people that think it's a bad idea than it's a good idea. So, we, you know, we don't, we don't move it forward. Similar situation when it comes to, you know, paving streets. There are, I wanna say, maybe four to six streets in the city-ish that still have gravel. And we, every now and again, hear, hey, can't we get it paved? And, you know, it's a, it's a cost that would be borne by the developer. Again, I'm using the Cadillac Junction as a big, for instance, the Cherry D Boulevard that's right off M-55, all the utility infrastructure, the lighting, the sidewalks, everything that's out there was paid by the developer and then vacated to the city. So now the city owns it. City's responsible to maintain it, you know, from now and until the end of time. Apologize if I'm rambling, but, you know, there, there could be a couple of, go ahead.
Oh, I don't wanna cut you off, Marcus. I just, I jump in a little bit. If, if there is a special assessment, one factor too is how much each parcel in that district has benefited. So, if this development is getting more benefit, obviously with having seventy units in it, then that assessment is likely going to be more than the single-family home that's also on the street. So, it's not like you take that total cost and just divide it evenly among the number of parcels. I guess the other thing, and I'm not sure how the city has historically done this, but it can be difficult to require an off-site improvement as a condition. You could say the road has to be paved, but in terms of saying the developer must pave, the developer doesn't have the authority by itself to go on and pave a public road. So, it might be a bit of semantics, but just keep that in mind that we obviously can and do require interior roads being paved. But to say the developer has to do something to a public street is not something we would typically do.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, it's a big maybe, members of the planning commission. There's lots of...
There's ways to get there.
Things that we were looking to. Yep.
I think the developer was, way back then, in the nineties, was up to, again, he couldn't just do it, but he was up to doing it to move forwards. But, but that's a long time ago. Yep.
And that former, that former plan should also be mentioned, that it was approved both as apartments and as condominiums at two different, on two different occasions. So, they were approved for, for both. And if I'm not mistaken, I think Rob was looking to have the option to go either or, either apartment or condominium.
The last approval, just so you can jump, because the acreage was wrong. It was two thousand and four where it had the signature on the plan that, you know, I got from the seller that had the city's approval on it. And so, that's, that's what... So, I, I didn't see the nineteen ninety-four one or nineties. But this was at the city. I wasn't there.
Right. I know you weren't.
I'm not gonna.
Are you doing year leases since everybody says their, people are just gonna be there a few months? Are you doing a year lease or is it?
They're typically all year leases. And, and someone talked about crime. I can't control crime no matter what. Okay? And, and so, that's just, okay. And their market rate, the, you know, so they aren't designed for low income. This is to help ease the housing impact. And by bringing nicer units in, that's gonna encourage, you know, people that are making a little bit more money to come into the community. So, it's not, it is, it's not Section Eight. It's not, you know, TIF.
Question while you're up here, just looking back, the project proposed to a, to be an apartment project with an option to convert a portion of all the units condominiums. What, you know, when submitted, what's that look like? You know, when, when do you determine there're gonna be apartments or condominiums? Just hearing from some of the people about, you know, investing into a condo you have ownership versus an apartment. Can you elaborate on that a little bit? On what, what the plan is?
Great question. The intent is that they're all apartments. The discussion because of previous approvals was condos and apartments. So, since it's a PUD, talked to my attorney. They said since it's a PUD, you should offer both just because if the economy changes. This project, you know, this is a tough project. I mean, financially, to do this project. With this grant, that's, that's nice, but the additional capital that's required and then the revenue, the current numbers in, in our area, it's, it's really, really tight to financially do this project. So, I mean, that's why I had to make some of the units the different sizes. But as far as doing a development, right now, or condos, excuse me, I don't know if, if we're gonna get as many people that can afford those units. It's probably a renters' market right now. So...
Right. Because they would be purchasing the whole thing, not just renting it, right?
Right.
Yeah.
A thousand square feet, let's talk four hundred thousand. I mean, it's, I don't know. That's a lot of money to me.
Oh, yeah.
That's a two-bedroom.
Like when the earlier condos were put in were much more affordable in the day. In the day. But nothing's affordable now. No.
I agree there.
And I, I was looking for Phase One where I put eighteen units up or two, two of the buildings. So, there's eighteen units. And, you know, that's Phase One. If, you know, if I don't do something correct, then, then I can't do Phase Two. You know, that's pretty much... I've developed over two thousand residential lots, single families. So, I kinda know a little bit about that side of things.
Yes, sir.
And so, there has to be trust. And, and it's, it's sensitive for the neighbors. I totally respect them. I totally agree with them.
So, we would be having construction in the next six years.
And that's how, ah, man, even to start this project, gonna kill that road. I mean, I'm just talking out loud. No, unfortunately. That's why I try, otherwise we can be here forever. That's all. I know. I know. We are. Do we, anything else for Rob at this stage of the game? Because I'm not sure where we're going, but...
Rob, you listened, you listened as everybody spoke. Were there questions that you feel like you could answer?
The paving of the roads, probably the toughest one. That, I agree with everybody that there's gonna be a change of density. There is. Ten units per acre is, in many parts of the country, that's not a high density. And that's not just downtown. You know, I tried to, you know, I respect the removing the trees. And then the wetlands, I've done the studies. And nobody would know that until they came here tonight. So, I respect that concern. And then noise during construction, you know, that's, that's gonna be tough.
It will be.
You know, you get a dump truck that's dropping sand and it's banging the back end. So, you know, those are some things I can't control. So, if I missed any, anything...
Even if you were building condos, it'd be the same noise. Yep. Marcus, sorry.
More or less, just a sort of knee-jerk comment, you know, regarding, regarding the road. I was, wanted to add that obviously, you know, the, the city is responsible for that road. And so, as I was listening to public feedback this, this evening, especially about, you know, dust and potholes and whatnot, I was also communicating with our operations manager to make, to make them aware that, you know, we might need to put, do a little more tender loving care on that road and to check it out. And the same would be true if, if there's a situation that should occur, whether it's because of, you know, a hundred-year rainstorm, like kinda like what we had last night, or because of construction traffic, you know. Ultimately, we, being the city, need to make sure that our public roads are drivable and navigable. So, I, I'm not saying that the city's gonna go out and throw asphalt down. But what I'm saying is that we'll obviously need to make sure that the road remains available. And we would have to work with, you know, developer or whomever to make sure that it's restored in a way that is passable. So, I didn't want the planning commission or the public to think that the road would get destroyed by sort of a one-off construction project and that it would just be left to rot. Would not be the case.
So, there was also a question about property values. Can you speak to that?
I would be doing a disservice, to be honest with you, because I am not your assessor. But I can tell you that in years past, when we have had a debate come to city council regarding construction of Habitat for Humanity houses, which are homes that are built specifically to be attainable by those that are at the lowest end of the income spectrum, that the tax analysis has shown that the property values to adjacent homes have actually improved after those homes have been built. My assumption would be that given the value of what this project is and what is being built and that it's market rate and not low-income attainable, that you would minimally see an appreciation of value, not a loss. But again, that would be a question best answered by our assessor unless there's been other tax analysis, John, that you have.
Not that I'm aware of.
So...
Thank you.
Yep.
John, in the, in one of your versions of the staff report, it mentioned a change to Building Nine and the movement of the rec center.
Right. One of my recommendations was taking out the one building that was in the center kinda courtyard area, sandwiched between other, two other buildings.
Oh, so number five, I guess.
Right. And because of the value of the views coming out of the buildings on either side would be right into the other building. And the other recommendation I had was to relocate the rec center because I felt like, was mentioned during the public hearing, that it was too close to the property line. But I think there could be another site found that moves the building considerably further away from the property line. I didn't wanna specify where that should be. I thought they should do a thoughtful analysis of where that could, where that could be.
Without that knowledge or certainty, can we approve that?
Well, keep in mind that this is a sketch plan. I mean, if you, if you incurred with wanting to remove one of the buildings, you could certainly do that as part of the sketch plan. And you could approve the relocated rec building as part of the final site plan with the caveat that, you know, that it's gonna be a concern of how close it is to the property line.
So, were you, were you saying move the rec center from the property line to the opposite corner?
I didn't wanna specify. I just wanted, I just wanted to move it further away. My idea, my idea for the final site plan would be that we would create a defined natural buffer on the perimeter, whether that be forty feet or fifty feet. We'd have to sit down and, and look at the plan and figure out what that could be. But I, I would like to see a natural preservation plan around the, around the perimeter.
There was something about three hundred feet. Let me go back to it. All the instruments we were provided limited to the project site. They do not appear to include lands within three hundred feet. This had to do with elements missing from the sketch plan, but this is just a sketch plan at this point?
Yeah, there was some question. Yeah, there, there was some question, um, the, the concern on the, our ordinance is, is very outdated, and quite frankly, it almost requires for the sketch plan, everything it requires for the final plan, which almost makes no sense. We, we waived some of those requirements to be consistent with, with what we did with the mixed PUD for Cadillac Junction, and if we go back to that plan, you'll see that the building footprints and the parking lots and, and some of those basic functions were put in as part of the sketch plan, and then, when they finally come in with the final buildings, then they, then they adjust that plan, and quite frankly, it was a good thing because as they became closer to marketing some of those, they actually relocated slightly some of the roads and so forth between sketch plan and final site plan, so, it kinda, it's, it's very expensive to go through the entire development of a plan if, if there's not even a general sense of, is it moving in the right direction?
That's fair, I guess maybe my question would be is, maybe it's a good question for legal counsel, is, is that fatal to the sketch plan?
Well, I don't, and, and, uh, in looking at the application for sketch plan approval, the sketch plan has to include boundaries and size of property, location, size and height of all buildings and building facades, interior roadway system, including parking facilities proposed and existing rights of way, loading and unloading areas, curb cuts to public roads and adjacent streets, the interior open space system with details on the size and use of the space, uh, ownership status at our U-, our PUD completion and method of maintaining same, the overall storm water drainage system, principal ties to the neighborhood and community with respect to transportation, water supply and sewage disposal, delineation of the various residential and non-residential areas and uses, including size, location, and number of housing units and other buildings, construction phases and construction schedule, um, like the phases, uh, existing natural features and proposed landscaping, topography existing and proposed, contour intervals of no greater than five feet, location, size, and function of proposed signs. So I don't actually see a three hundred foot...
Sub thirteen below there.
Further, further down?
Location of all structures within three hundred feet of the property line of the subject property.
I'm just, I'm maybe looking a different version of the ordinance than you.
Maybe you're looking at a newer one, this is just one on our website.
No, that's what I meant, thirteen. Mine goes to eleven on sketch plan.
Hmm, well, maybe I'm looking at, yeah, it's B thirteen.
Does somebody need a copy or something?
My B, my B goes to eleven, John.
My B goes to thirteen.
So, what does that say in the...
Well, it says that the sketch plan shall include the location of all structures within three hundred feet of the property line of the subject property. I don't know that it's substantive, but if it's somehow fatal to the sketch plan, that's, that was my main question.
Part of that is so that people within three hundred feet get notice.
Right.
They get it.
They did. So no, I don't believe that's fatal, can answer your question.
Okay.
And we'll figure out the different websites we're looking at later.
I mean, certainly, we can request that driveways across the street be added before final site plan would come back, uh, and, and just like we did with the mixed PUD, if it's, it warrants, uh, making some adjustments to where those roads, uh, e- exit the property, uh, those adjustments can be made, um, because, you know, it was done with the mixed-use PUD.
John, can I ask Rob a question?
Of course.
Sure. Uh, Rob? Just, just a very quick question, what did you have planned for waste disposal and/or recycled, where?
It's public, city water and sewer, it's service...
Pick up smell, site?
Yeah, yeah.
Did you have a plan for that yet?
Not yet.
Okay, I was just curious as to where, I mean, if I'm in the condominium, then you put that in the top right corner, I probably wouldn't be happy.
Well, the bends will end up being, uh, probably on the corners, um, and then there will be enclosure, just like what the city requires, so you'll have to have a masonry enclosure with a gate, so it can't just...
You'll have a collection area then, rather than individual...
Correct.
Dumpster.
Yeah, there's not gonna be any individual, and it's like plans, uh, as John said, uh, it's, like, I've never done a site plan with full construction plans, and in the current, uh, you know, zoning, it's asking for full construction plans? Okay, if I come in and you switch it, then I'm, I'm moving sewer and water, so that, that, it, it's kind of odd.
That's a lot of money.
And John said that they're updating your planning, uh, and zoning, so, sounds like it's coming up.
If I can jump in also really quick, um, Laura and Commissioner Baumann, uh, we figured out really quickly the, the difference, um, lo-, section forty-three, or, excuse me, forty-six dash three sixteen is the R-PUD section, um, and section forty-six dash six four five is the MPUD section.
Oh.
Slight differences, just make sure you're both looking at our...
I'm looking, I am looking at R-PUD.
Yeah, I think Baumann...
You were looking, you were looking at the right one, I was looking at the wrong one.
Okay, so in the R-PUD, which lies here, there is not a requirement of the three hundred feet.
So six forty-five is actually not relevant to an R-PUD.
That answers the question, right, 'cause that's mixed use, and this is not mixed use.
Yep, so that...
We were looking at the...
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Was there any problem with you and the rec center and moving a building?
No, no, I...
That John pointed out in his staff notes.
Uh, actually, the rec building, uh, Eric put that, I got this plan, uh, the one that you're looking at right now, Eric from Pryonewoff put the rec building there, and then I ended up getting the plan with the rec building in a, in the wrong loca-, I would've put the rec building there, so I am in complete agreement with John, so that was just something that I, I didn't know was done, um, so, so I, you're not gonna get any pushback.
So, John, when you were talking about building number five, were you saying eliminate it altogether, or move it?
Yeah, I think that's what I was suggesting.
But doesn't that short you a building here?
Well, he has, he has flexibility within the size of units to move up or down, the, the building, you can comment on how many units a building can have, it can have as little as what, like...
Four.
Four, and then go all the way up to ten, so even though you might lose another building, you could maybe stay somewhat consistent with the overall density, or, or you could choose not to. Um, it certainly makes it, I'm coming upon you if you wanted to get to that total seventy, to, to put in more units in those other buildings, but you could also choose not to do it and slightly drop the density.
I, but I agree with you, building number five, and the view that those people would have out their window is looking into their neighbors' windows, so...
That'd be like living in the city, yeah.
I'd say some people...
But they don't live in the city.
Well, there.
Interstate.
Okay, anything else for Rob before he can sit down again? Everybody good with Rob?
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, sir.
Have all the questions been answered?
Thanks, sir.
Pretty much what I wrote down has been answered.
I was hoping we did.
I, I asked all of those, but I...
I guess I'm the other, 'cause I meant two for the...
Now, this is just a sketch, so when they decide, or when Rob decides, this is what he's gonna do, he has to come back before us, and then we say, you have to put trees here, fences here, you have to do your, your water runoff, that's, that's part of the thing.
He'll have a full, everything that's required from our site plan checklist will have to be done.
Okay.
That'll include drainage, it'll include, uh, what we've agreed to, it'd be the final preservation plan for the perimeter landscaping, what new landscaping he might do around the buildings, all that information would have to be on that final site plan.
And that would be open to the public as well?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the proposed sketch plan for Copper Trails Residential Plan Unit Development, and it's entirely as associated with the phased-in conditions noted by staff in its report.
You gonna do just phase at a time, or the entire...
Well, he's gonna do it, uh, excuse me, so, in phases as proposed.
In phases, so that means it'll come back to us at the phase.
So every time he comes back with a sketch, we do this again.
So his phases are allowing him to not have to come back to...
For sketch plan.
Your motion is for the, all the phases.
Correct, all the phases.
That's where I'm trying to figure out where we're at, yeah.
Okay.
Subject, obviously, to additional site plan approvals as necessary under the zoning ordinance.
Then he would have to time his final site plans within the timeframes he gave in those phases.
And then I guess, one thing that hasn't been addressed, and I'm gonna probably toss it at you, Marcus, is their speed issue.
Oh, yes.
Got it, already kicked it out.
You got it, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That is all over the city of Cadillac.
If that's that easy, I got some other places you can look at.
You've got a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Seconded by Mayor Danielle.
Yep. All right, Bosher. Bunce.
Yes.
Bent. Hutman.
Yes.
Baumann.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Falcons.
Yes.
No, not necessarily, no, 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 uh, 'cause...
May I, may I say something?
Please.
Okay, I would, I would just like to say that, um, doing, doing these things are, are never easy. Um, we have a housing crisis, and, um, both, um, Andy and John talked about, um, the Housing Coalition, we've been having meetings for months and months and year or so, there are a lot of people that are involved in this coalition, trying to figure out ways to get housing into our communities, not just within the city of Cadillac, but the greater area, Wexford County, Mesaki County, um, we are fortunate in Cadillac to have developers that are willing, not just Mr. Mongar, but the Lofts people, the people that are looking at Lake Street, that there are developers that are willing to come here, instead of Traverse City or Grand Rapids or Potaskey, to help us with our housing crisis. And I know that it might be a perception out there that we're letting these developers come in and make all of this money from our community, and if any one of you wanted to sit down and look at financials of any development project, um, you might be, you might be really surprised that many of these developers are trying to address this crisis without making a huge amount of money on their return, or huge amount of returns on their investment, but it's addressing a critical need in this community. You know, we have employers in our town, we have so many wonderful employers, we've got a great industry base, we have the hospital, we have the school system, and they lose quality employee opportunities because people don't have a place to live. People who live here, you know, they have to settle, they, they might end up with a whole house because there isn't another option, and that takes away a whole house for a family that needs a house. And so if we have more housing choices for a young professional to move into a studio apartment or a one-bedroom apartment, then that frees up the housing market for families who can't find housing. And, and, you know, so many things come before the planning commissioner, the city council, and, you know, people want things, but they don't, you know, this, this development is gonna bring that traffic right by my house. My, I live on the, one of the busiest streets in Cad- Cadillac, Granite Street, which turns into Sunnyside Drive, all of that traffic is gonna be coming by my house, and people think that Granite Street is a highway. Right? It is, it's fifty, it's fifty-five, coming through Business Fifty-Five, but there's speed limits, and they're not respected. So, you know, I could take the position that, um, you know, gosh, you know, this housing development is gonna bring all that traffic by my house, but it's not about, it's not about me, it's about the greater good of the community, and how can we make these projects? How can we get them to move forward? And, and it's going to be at somebody's expense, no matter where we decide to put developments, but by gosh, we have the opportunity to provide housing, and I'm grateful for all of you coming here tonight and, and voicing your concerns, I have some concerns too, and I'm grateful for the people who sit on this board with me, 'cause we have to make some difficult decisions, but all of that said, I just wanna say that I, I love this community, and I appreciate all of you, and thank you for taking the time to be here this evening.
And I, and I agree with her, uh, we appreciate you coming, we do, and we don't make our decisions lightly, we don't.
What happens if the project goes bankrupt, then you're gonna have empty buildings? Didn't he say he was on the lot, supposed to be, and then it didn't go his way, so he dropped that project?
No, I, I think he got bought out or something.
Can I, can I just say, there are friends in this room tonight because Edgeview Condominiums were, were born, they were built, even though there was opposition in the neighborhood back then, you all have wonderful friendships now, you know, you have, you have a neighborhood, and you've made it work, and you, you met people, you met people in this project that you wouldn't have met if Edgeview wasn't allowed to come into Cadillac.
If they're permanent residents, they aren't renters, that are gonna come in.
But, but I don't think that it, the, I don't think that, I don't think that his...
Laura, did you have something?
Nope, I, I just, you know, we need to keep, yeah.
We need to keep it for, for, and he, Kevin said something.
Nope, we're fine.
Okay.
Everybody good?
So, okay.
Uh, give everybody an opportunity, if you wanna leave, we still have some stuff.
They don't know what I drive, so there won't be a knife in my tiger.
There's restrooms around the corner, I know everybody's been in here a long time, me included.
This, you can pee when we're done.
Okay. Not before. God, I'm glad you ate.
You should.
You can contact the city staff, and they'll be able to...
But I don't think if that developer didn't keep going with it, then it had to have.
Good to see you, take it easy, Cameron, you too.
That's not really what he's thinking.
See in your, uh, footleg?
You're strong.
As manners.
Hey, John, what else we got?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Laura jab you, or kick me?
No, I'm just...
No, she's just looking this way.
I don't look.
All right, new business, we have nothing, old business, nothing, board member comments, I, I'm not saying nothing, unless any other board members have comments, so...
I said enough.
You did wonderful.
You covered everything.
You did, okay.
But I remember when these came in, and they had the same thing, these condos and stuff.
That's true, people didn't want...
Did we, um, was there a publicly useful update on the, um, site plan approval?
Is that for, uh...
For this, is it seven oh seven or seven twenty?
Yeah, the vape shop.
Yeah, so I can speak a bit to that, my understanding is there, uh, is some possible non-compliance with what was approved, so you can expect on your July, to see that on the July agenda, we're going to provide written notice, um, to the owner, um, for an opportunity to come in, because that special use permit could be revoked for failure to satisfy the conditions.
Which one is this?
Mancino's vape shop.
The former Mancinos.
Yeah.
Is that the one on Pine Street?
No.
No, 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 no.
No, that's, they're, you're doing stuff on Pine Street too, we seen.
One twenty-eight Pine Street?
Yes.
Yes, there's a lawsuit pending, and service has been accepted by their attorney.
Perfect, thank you for those updates.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other board member comments, move on, okay. Uh, communications, we're back to Mr. Wallace on zoning options for a proposed bed and breakfast at three twelve East Cass Street, uh, apparently by Kirtland Terrace.
Uh, yes, Andy Ulrich, who's, uh, here this evening, he, uh, purchased a home from the Feaster, uh, family, and that home was originally a bed and breakfast. He purchased a home from the Feaster, uh, family, and that home was originally a bed and breakfast. It was, uh, approved at, uh, three twelve East Cass Street. And at the time it was approved, they limited the, um, bed and breakfast to five sleeping rooms, and just that it met all the Michigan, State of Michigan requirements. And the, uh, bed and breakfast was approved. Sometime later, uh, the, uh, permit for the breakfast, bed and breakfast was revoked due to it, uh, the business actually closing. And so we're taking that revocation as the need to reapply. The reason we're here is, right now, with the existing zoning, which is RM one, that, uh, it can't, it can't proceed. Even though it's a multifamily district, bed and breakfasts weren't entertained in the multifamily district. So there's really kinda two options we could go down if, if you're inclined to think that, uh, this project makes sense. One would be to, uh, go to a TS two district, which is, I think, the only zoning district which allows bed and breakfast, which the ordinance is so old, it's called tourist homes. So, and then somebody could say, well, we're spot zoning, and we could argue that it's not spot zoning, because we have other TS twos that are independent, uh, on their own. And yet, but the other thing we could do is we could add, uh, bed and breakfasts or tourist homes to the uses allowed either by right or special use permit in the multifamily districts, uh, which in some ways seems like it would make more sense. But we have two avenues to go down, so I guess we're just, Andy's looking for, uh, some feedback. Does one of those methods sound better? Is, is there support for what used to be? My understanding is, and Andy can address this, the home was designed around, uh, being built as a bed and breakfast. So I don't know, Andy, if you wanna say a few words about what you've been through on the project?
Could I give you guys a handout, or a little bit? I might talk a little bit about this. I, I would also say that John and Danielle have been really helpful to me. That's been really nice.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, so I bought this house at three twelve East Cass Street, and it's one of the coolest historic homes. Oh, by the way, I am not speaking from, I'm, I run a nonprofit. I'm just speaking as a personal thing, nothing to do with my, my job. But I bought this house, and it's really one of the coolest historic homes in, in Cadillac. It, I, I was saying it's like the Jersey Manor, but, um, it may be something else. But, uh, Mr. Jersey was the, um, I looked up the kinda history of it, and he was the, uh, a banker in town and the first treasurer, I believe, of the city of Cadillac, uh, and kinda made this, uh, place. So six bedrooms, seven full bathrooms in this place, two hot tubs, a grand piano in there, wood floors, antique fireplace, hardwood floors. Um, the, I've told a couple of people about this. I'm actually really excited to talk about it, because I've hardly told anybody. But, uh, like, three different people have said, um, there's like kinda a master suite on the third floor, which, um, has its own, uh, bathroom suite, huge, uh, room. It's got a hot tub in the middle of the room, and a spiral staircase that goes up to a fourth-floor loft that has a deck that overlooks the lake and like, you know, all the houses in the area. It's pretty impressive. So, yeah, just like, three different people came and said, I spent my honeymoon in this, uh, in this place. Did you?
Not my honeymoon, but I did do an anniversary there.
Oh, wow.
Up there, yeah.
We've, we've been in there, yeah.
Really? Wow. Um, so it's kind of, that was before my time, but there, you know, for, uh, a few decades, it was a bed and breakfast, uh, and really, it's built to be that. It's only got one kitchen. So, uh, yeah, and, um, it has a whole lot of potential. It's about two blocks to walking distance in Cadillac, so operated as the American Inn for a number of years. Uh, and then for about the last fifteen years, um, it kinda was more, um, just renting rooms out of there. And I, I would say it had kinda, um, uh, not all the tenants, but some of them, were, were a little bit rough. And, um, you know, I, like, I sing in the first Presbyterian church, and, um, like, someone came over, like, super inebriated, uh, you know, we had to kinda walk them back to that place, and, um, so there, there were some issues, or, uh, it, it definitely was like quite rundown, so. And so, yeah, I was kinda working with the city and to see, do we wanna try to apply for a different zoning for that? Or just to have the, I mean, I probably leaned just for a variance for a B and B, um, uh, uh, you know, permit for that, like, like it was before. We'd kinda checked with legal, and they were kinda saying, we should bring it back for another vote, and not just, um, uh, revoke what, what had been, um, before. So some factors that might consider in that zoning thing, you know, it, this place really was, it was designed, it's designed to be a bed and breakfast, you know, like, there's not, um, I don't think I'm taking housing away from anyone, or, uh, the, the problem was, is that, um, you know, it was being rented out by the room, and if there's one kitchen, then people are kinda living out of their microwaves and stuff like that, and that's not, um, that's not, I don't think, really, uh, healthy. When I, when I bought it, I think there were fourteen people packed into this place. I, my worst fear, to be honest, was like that there was gonna be a fire, and this place would burn down or something. And there, um, you know, there's kids living in the basement and stuff like that, and it was not such a good thing. So, um, yeah, so it's, yeah, it's, it's even not really, you know, really set up for a single-family unit. Like, if, there's not too many people that need two hot tubs and a built-in wood sauna, you know what I mean? So it would be, uh, I, I would say maybe, uh, be more appropriate for, um, a B and B. I'd also say this is very different than other kinda short-term rental options, you know. I'd be on-site, you know, and make sure that there's not, um, any shenanigans going on or anything. It's not like, uh, it's not like other kinda Airbnb-type stuff. So it's, so some other zoning factors, it is located right across from Kirtland Terrace, which is, uh, zoned R two.
That's probably, probably RM two, probably.
Yeah, um, uh, the neighbors on all the sides, I've talked with them personally, they're actually really happy that it's, I, I put a lot of money into it already, um, and fixing it up. I'm about halfway through. It's kinda like remodeling two or three different homes, just 'cause it's so big. I think it's like four eight hundred square feet or something.
They're probably glad not to have seventeen neighbors in Kirtland Terrace.
Yeah, the whole backyard is, um, paved, um, so it's, it, I think it could be, um, you know, I think we could get between six or eight, um, parking spots in there. But I think I'd probably just want around like three, uh, three rooms, something like that. It's also currently on the block where State Farm is there, and they also, they already have, uh, they're zoned differently, and they're zoned commercial, uh, which just makes that block kinda interesting, uh, already. So, uh, the two options that John brought up were, you know, requesting, you know, a variance to reinstate the bed and breakfast, or possibly, you know, request a rezoning, and I, I just didn't wanna get further down that. If you guys really were like, we're against this, or you, you really think it should go one way or the other, I'd kinda like to know beforehand, and then I could...
So are you going to live here?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Just to clarify, I don't think it would be a variance. It would be, it would be a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to add this as a use either by right or by special use in that district.
Right, depending on how comfortably we're...
Yeah.
I think this is always very popular.
How, how do you distinguish it from the issue that shall not be named? In a constitutional way?
Uh, by putting a definition in whatever we do. I think there is already definition, as John said, for this tourist...
Tourist home.
Tourist home, which I'll pull up, um, which may require the owner to be on-site.
I was gonna say, just have to be owner occupied.
And while you're looking for that, what's it currently zoned, John? Is that office service district?
No, I think, he's, he's, he's in RM one, and the Kirtland Terrace is RM one as well. So he would be, his zone, current zoning is consistent.
Oh, there it is. That was on the wrong block.
And I do have an answer to your question. Bed and breakfast is actually defined in the zoning ordinance as a single-family dwelling unit in which the innkeeper resides and has up to eight rooms available for rent to transient tenants for fewer than thirty days. So that person living there and being on-site at the time, I think, is what distinguishes it from short-term rentals.
Don't advertise it on VRBO site.
Listen to her.
So my, my angle, and actually, Carl, you would kinda know about this a little bit, is that the, the two groups that I would kinda like to court to, to get in that some, were, um, maybe following some of the model of like Munson House in Traverse City, like, the, the hospital has a place where people can stay. Like, let's say you're getting surgery, or you're having rehab, and you have to stay someplace for two weeks, because my spouse is there, or my kid is there. You know, to provide a classy and respectable, uh, place for them to be, that might be, that have a different feeling and be a little more warm and friendly than maybe just staying at a motel, or something like that, for a couple of weeks. Um, and also, the, the Chamber of Commerce has kinda said that there is a need for, as housing is tighter, for people to be able to relocate to the area, um, you know, when a new engineer moves in town, or something like that, you know. Like, me, I moved into town fifteen years ago. I love Cadillac. I'll never leave. This place is great. But like, I had to, like, rent a place for a month and a half while I bought a house, and I was here. So I, I could see potentially even some people, you know, staying longer than thirty days, or being in more of a traditional category of, um, uh, if they're like that, you know, like, uh, that might be a traditional rental. But I'd like the option to have it for a shorter time, and I think that would serve a need that really is not around right now. You know, and I, I think this is a really unique property, or different than, um, it's, this is the only place I know of that had this B and B license, you know, and operated that for a long time in our, in our city.
And, you know, and with the hospital, and all the clinics that they own, you know, they have a lot of traveling clinicians.
They sure do.
And so that would be a nice option, a nice additional.
Well, or, yeah, I'd even, yeah, like to provide a discount for them or something. It's, I think it's something we wanna promote, uh, in our area.
I personally like the text amendment option as opposed to a rezoning to TS one, just...
Is this something we're looking for a decision on tonight?
No, just information. Just information.
Make sure you didn't wanna set it, set it on fire and...
And Andy, you did a thorough inspection on that porch, right?
Which porch? There are several. I, I was working on the concrete on the back porch last week.
Your other house farther up the street.
Oh, yeah, I got hit by a car. Yeah, um, a nurse hit it.
Can this one take that?
Two in the morning. It's actually, these ones are concrete.
Okay.
Yeah, these ones are concrete, so it's probably more, uh, durable, uh, actually, yeah, yeah.
Well, congratulations on your...
Thanks, thanks.
If we were going, if we were going to the direction of text amendment, would we add it to both RM one and RM two? They're both multifamily districts. Or would we just do the RM one, which I think he, he is zoned right now? I'm just wondering if we might stumble into this again in an RM two.
Would there be any reason not to?
Not that I can think of.
And still be subject to special use permit?
Yeah, you can make it a special use.
Yeah.
When you do your text amendment, you can make it a permitted use or...
Yeah, I, I suggest a special use and...
Does that, does that then require, um, on-site, uh, what I mean, owner occupancy then?
Yeah, so that's the distinction between those, is that the innkeeper is there, and that may need to be a... In adding it, it can, you know, we can also have other conditions that are required, of course, and that may be that they are there the entire time, or on-site. You can never leave.
Rent it out for a week, you're going on vacation.
You said you wanna...
You're a cooker, yeah.
I can cook, yeah. I, I'd be happy to provide, actually, a nice breakfast. It would be a little...
What's that? Hotel California for you.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it'd be fun, actually. It'd be kinda an adventure, you know. So, okay, so I think we have some direction then about where to go, and so maybe I'll bring it up for a vote next time. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for being patient tonight. You had to sit through a lot.
Thank you, sir.
Wow. I still have public, and, uh, public can have comments right now. If anyone has comments, please bring them to us, 'cause...
Okay, I'll talk again. Um, I just wanted to, my name is Lori Sorensen from Edgeview Condominiums. It was mentioned that you didn't know where the two discrepancies for three point nine five acres. Well, you're posting in the paper, and the letters that we received says three point nine five. So that's where that's coming from, and his application says seven point one three. So that's where we're talking about that. I can totally respect and appreciate your hard decision. You can't make everybody happy. And there is a need, I understand that, and nobody wants their area to change, and it to be the same, you know, forty years. You heard some people. And that road is terrible, so I really trust that you will look into it. I can't imagine the angle of that road. It's not a straight four-way. It's an angle. And, um, people do fly down there. They, they have all those legitimate comments were true. And our condominium complex has fifty-four units, and we're on forty-six point five acres. And three-quarters of our condominiums are surrounded by wetlands. And we do have lots of nature, bobcats, deers, bear, um, rabbits, you know, everything. And so no one wants to have, uh, short-term rental right, right next to their property.
This is definitely not that. Let's be clear.
Okay.
This is an apartment. Short-term rental is a much, even...
Okay, well, well, I'm sorry. Not a sh- I, that, wrong term. Apart, that's a goo- that's a bad term right now. It's, uh, short-term apartments, or apartments, he said a yearly lease, but, you know, it's, it, it's different than people owning, you know, a two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar condo that they buy into, because ninety-five percent of our people that live there are retired. And, uh, that's where they're going to stay, so...
It sounds like you have a special community there.
We do, and we really take care of it. And I, and I will be talking to Mr. Mongar about, you know, uh, some nice boundary lines, uh, borders and all that stuff.
And I know he'll listen.
So will we.
Yes.
So will we.
Yes, becau- it's really important, um, to us. We've had other people coming through and, and causing a little bit of trouble, coming through the wetlands, uh, just walking through. So, you know, we're a little bit protective that way. We have a lot of seniors and a lot of older people. So I appreciate that, and I thank you for letting us all talk and listening to us. And I agree, it does look like all of you do care.
We do.
Yeah.
Decisions.
So.
And it did sound like you met friends...
Oh, we, yeah.
Before, none of, nobody wanted your project.
No, they didn't. I know, but our project, you know, started out as fifty-four acres.
Right.
And that's pretty big.
Not, not seven.
Not seven. And, yeah, and, and I don't, I, I get, I guess I'm, sorry, but I got a little defensive by previous approval of, uh, condominium projects or whatever on that acreage. 'Cause if that's a previous approval, then it was a previous approval to pave that road. And so, you, you know, it's a little bit of both ways, and so, thank you very much.
We thank you all for coming tonight, really. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Bob Durant.
I think I hadn't known that, but...
Really? Hey, everybody's gotta know.
How are you, sir?
Um, I, I'm great.
Awesome.
I just wanna say, kinda like the gentleman back there said, I've known Rob for years. He will build a building. It will be right. He will try to take care of any issues, any questions, any problems. Their kind of association has had a lot of garbage dropped on them from, because of the owner, when it was built. Rob won't let that happen. I just want them to know that. But he is a good guy. Right? That's it. Short and sweet.
Gosh, thank you, sir. A positive note, and...
That was the shortest I've ever heard him talk.
I just had one point to make, that some of the comments about rentals, that, oh, they're only gonna be there three months or whatever. I have some rental properties, and my rents are eight hundred to thirteen hundred. And I've had people in them for thirteen years. I don't have any turnover. And if you have a nice place and you take care of it, they're not there for just a couple of months. So I don't think it's gonna be this transient traffic that they think it might be. I don't think it'll be that way.
Thank you, Linda. Any other public comments? God, I might get to the end of this.
I think this is the longest planning commission.
I am so glad Joe ate, 'cause Joe would be unbearable.
We would've been done two hours ago if I hadn't eaten, though.
We've gone to nine thirty ten.
Okay, we have no other bit. Marcus?
Sorry.
Trying to keep us here.
Oh, I...
No.
Pound again.
Just, just a very quick update, uh, by our, uh, legal representative.
We already did that.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry.
I apologize.
Thank you, Marcus.
I must've stepped out. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure we were okay.
He was out in the lobby.
Sorry.
Laura's a...
Thank you, Marcus. I appreciate it.
And we're all happy with her news.
Perfect. I'm gonna stop talking.
Okay.
It's nice to have her here.
Well, thank you. It was good to be here.
We're all, thank you.